All to order, the City Council meeting tonight. Today's date's May 10, 2021. The time is 5:30 PM. We are at 10 West State Street, which happens to be the City Hall Council chambers. I have to read this notice to the public that the Mayor and Council welcome comment from the public during discussion of any of the items on the agenda. You're required to step to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Limit your time to three minutes or less so that others may be given the opportunity to speak. Speak clearly and direct your comments to the Mayor and Council and not to any Consular specifically. It's at the discretion of the Mayor and Council to respond to specific questions and comments or have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to the order, will those able to please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's take the roll.
Gowdy.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Lottie Hoff.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Weren.
Very good. Five out of seven gives us a quorum. It's time for the Mayor, Council, and Mr. Comments, but before that, we have an opportunity to recognize somebody in the Police Department. Chief Tupper, would you take the mic?
Good evening. Mike Tupper, Marshawn Police Department. So, this is Police Week. And traditionally, for the last several years now, we have celebrated Police Week by naming our Employee of the Year, and that's what we're going to do here tonight. So, with me tonight is Officer Steven Sheets. He's been named our Employee of the Year. And I'm going to tell you about Steven, but the first thing I'd like to do is talk a little bit about Police Week, if you can bear with me. So, May 9th through the 15th, this year is Police Week, National Police Week. National Police Week is always the week in May that has May 15th in it because May 15th is National Police Officer Memorial Day. And President Kennedy, many years ago, designated May 15th as National Police Officer Memorial Day, and we've been celebrating Police Week ever since then. For me, and for people that wear this uniform, it's an important week. It's an excellent time to reflect upon those law enforcement officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice and have given their lives in the protection of their communities across the United States. It's also a great time to thank professionals like Steven and all the other people that I get to work with every day for all that they do to serve and protect in our communities. I always remind everybody that it's important to remember that being a police officer can be and very often is a dangerous profession. Over the last decade, on average, 176 police officers are killed in the United States each year. And annually, more than 50,000 are assaulted. Sometimes those numbers are hard to understand, and they don't really mean much to people. So, I always try to remind people that 176 police officers, on average, killed in line of duty, that's 176 fathers, mothers, husbands, wives, friends, brothers, sisters, killed for just trying to do their job and serve their communities. 2020 was pretty rough on law enforcement, so 306 police officers died in line of duty. A lot of those numbers are due to COVID. Police officers were on the front lines during COVID, during the pandemic. We didn't get to call it in from home or from our COVID-safe basement. They came to work every day. COVID-19 had a devastating impact on the line of death duty numbers in 2020, but COVID-19 is far from the only danger our police officers face. In 2021, so far, 96 police officers have been killed in the United States. 19 of these deaths are attributed to officers being shot. To paint a clearer picture of the danger our cops face so far, in 2021, 91 officers have been shot in the United States. 23 of those attacks were the result of ambush attacks. So, people setting up a situation where they can deliberately take out a police officer, or try to. There has never been a more challenging time to work as a police officer in our country. I'm convinced of that. I started my career certainly after Rodney King, and that was a difficult time. This is a difficult time to be a police officer in this country. What everyone should know, though, is that the ranks of our police departments are filled with highly skilled professionals. Do not believe what you see in the national media, and really, do not believe what you see on social media, please. Our cops are top-notch, and policing remains a noble profession filled with honorable people. It takes a special person to be successful in law enforcement, and in Marshalltown, we're fortunate to have dedicated and compassionate professionals serving in our community. The men and women of the Marshawn Police Department strive each day to provide exceptional service, and they do a great job, and some of them are here tonight. They do a great job under very difficult circumstances many times. And I feel very fortunate to work with this wonderful group of professionals, and I want to take this time to thank all of the police officers, detectives, reserve police officers, 911 operators, deputies, state and federal officers, and all of our law enforcement support staff personnel for their service to our community. They do a great job providing a very important service for us all, and I'm just blessed to be able to work with them. And I also want to say that our department sincerely appreciates the tremendous support we receive on a daily basis from this City Council, from the city administration, and our community as a whole. We are blessed to work in a community that values public safety and supports our public safety professionals. To the public, I say, we need your support now more than ever, and I want to thank you for everything that you do for us. So, Officer Sheets was selected by a group of his peers as the Employee of the Year. Now, I get to sign off on this, but it's not really up to me. It's up to the people that these officers work with, and I can't think of a more deserving person to be selected as this year's Marshawn Police Department Employee of the Year. Now, Steven has worked and served our community well for nearly eight years. He works as a uniform patrol officer. He recently came from night shift to day shift. He's also assigned to the MPD Tactical Team. Steven is a great cop, and he stands out as a leader within the department. Because of these skills, Steven has been assigned as a field training officer. Being a field training officer is one of the most important jobs that we have in a police department because the field training officers are literally building the department of the future. They're training the new employees as they come on, and they're shaping them, molding them, and they're building our future leaders, and they're making sure that we have police officers that can do the job well and serve our community proudly. Steven has excelled in this assignment, and he's doing a great job. Officer Sheets has also established himself as a proven and effective law enforcement professional. His peers and supervisors look up to him for his leadership, professionalism, and communication skills. He is someone that I can always rely on. He has a great attitude. I'm not sure that I've ever heard Steven complain, or say no, or say, "This sucks. I can't do this." He just gets the job done.
Just not a good one.
The other thing that I really like about Steven and appreciate about Steven is he's very quiet about how he does his work, but he has a determined demeanor, and he works so hard, and we're very lucky to have Officer Sheets on the Police Department team. Every year, I try to come up with some words that describe the folks that have won this award, and for Steven, I came up with this list. Professional, smart, honest, straightforward, determined, reliable, tough but kind-hearted, and dedicated. All those terms describe Steven very well. I think maybe the best thing I can say about Steven, though, is during a time of crisis or chaos, I want Steven on my team. He will be ready, and he will get the job done. So, thank you, Steven, for everything that you do to serve our department and our community. Thank you for serving each day with passion and compassion, and thank you for the unwavering support of your team members and your community. Lana Bradstream is here from the TR to present Steven with this plaque, and I just want to say, on behalf of the Police Department, thank you to The Times Republican. This is a program that we've partnered with The Times Republican on for many years now. It was one of their first ideas that they brought to me when I got here, and I really appreciate all of the support that The Times Republican gives to the Police Department and everything that they do to help us with our job, too. So, Lana is going to present Steven with the award, and Steven, I just want to say congratulations on this incredible honor.
Thank you, Chief.
Congratulations.
Thank you for this. During the interview that I had for The Times Republican, I pointed out that I view this more as a reflection on the shift that I had with me at the time and the shift that I have with me now. Surrounded by a great group, a bunch of guys and gals, and we just managed to get the job done, and we had a lot of big situations last year that we were able to work through, and it was just because of the team that was around us. So, I can't be standing up here without them behind me, and I also like to thank my wife. She understands everything that we go through. She doesn't complain about it. She just knows that I got to go do that stuff, and she has stood behind me the whole time. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Congratulations again, and thanks, Chief. At this time, we could go on to item F and entertain...
I do have one thing I'd like to mention.
And I forgot to solicit comments from others, too.
Yeah, just to remind everybody that this Saturday, there are two pretty big events going on in the morning. From 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the wastewater treatment plant is the hazardous materials drop-off, and then from 8:00 to 11:30, on the north side of Marion Street near JBS, we will be having the spring cleanup item drop-off as well. And so, there are certainly restrictions of what you can bring to that, and those are on our website if anybody would like to reference that. But this is a big event. We do it once a year, and we weren't able to do it last year due to the COVID, so we're hoping that we will be able to help out the community and clean things up.
Very good. Thank you. That's a good segue to invite Consular Lottie Hoff to tell us about this last weekend as well.
This weekend, this past weekend on Saturday, we had Team Up to Clean Up, which was Ward One. We teamed up with Marshalltown Central Business District. They're great people to work with, absolutely great. Via Suato Supermarket hosted us. We had over 100 people show up. It was a great, great turnout. All of Main Street and Ward One were cleaned, trash, everything. We ended up collecting 3.83 tons of stuff, which is just about 8,000 pounds of stuff. We were, we also had the Bobcat Girls softball team, the whole team, bright and early, ready to go. Remix Dance Academy came. I believe they brought a bunch of girls and some parents. JBS sent an entire crew all morning to help. There had to have been 25 people in that. Junk Relief, which is Jake Rowley and Mercedes, did all the pickup and the disposal. Dairy Queen provided ice cream cones, and Hoagland's had Cash for Clunkers going. All in all, it was really good. If you drive around Ward One, you really notice it. It looks really good. Gary also came, which, as he lives in Ward One, he ought to. So, I'm very proud of the whole thing. It went very well. It speaks well of Ward One and people in the community that really want to help. The other thing that I wanted to bring up in comments is some of the things that you don't see happening at City Hall that you don't hear much about. Recently, I contacted the Mayor to see if he would do a letter of support for Riverview Cemetery for their reapplication to their FEMA. The Mayor put together a letter. He also worked with Alicia Hutter, Jessica Kinzer, and Michelle Sponheimer, and they all put together a really, really good letter that should help them. A lot of times, we don't see this kind of work. We have immensely talented people in the city, and every once in a while, I hear people grumble about the city helping nonprofits. That's why. We have some really talented people, and when we can, we should help. That's all I have.
Thank you. Very good. And it really was fun to see the turnout last weekend, and thank you for your input in getting that going on social media. Would any of the other Consulars like to address the group tonight?
Your Honor, if I may.
Mr. Thompson.
First of all, I want to clarify something that Councilman Lottie Hoff said. I may have been there for three hours, but I didn't work for three hours. But I think that goes without being said, so... And then Sue Cahill was also there.
Yes.
Did a good job. But I want to give, I started a little trend, giving shout-outs to the little victories after the tornado, after the derecho, the businesses in town. Said a few things about some other businesses, and something came to light Saturday when Mike and I were speaking with Jim Palmer, who owns American Aluminum Seating here in town, and this is a company that a lot of people probably don't know about. There's probably not a lot of customers in Marshawn Town, Iowa for his business, except, you know, the, I suppose, Park and Rec would know him, Little League, different organizations like that that need bleachers. But to celebrate the success of a Marshawn company that has been in business for over 33 years, they recently won a contract for the Iowa State Fair. There's a new truck and tractor pole venue that will be set up for the 2021 fair. And again, the fair was impacted by COVID, just like everybody else. There was not a state fair last year. So, this is a big news that the fair is coming back, and Jim's company, American Aluminum Seating, they won this contract to build a seating for this truck and tractor pole area that will seat over 2,000 spectators. And, I mean, I could go on and tell you more, but I just want to say, this is a great success story for a little Marshawn Town company. There are things, like Mike said, things going on behind the scenes here at City Hall that he mentioned. There's things going on every day in Marshawn Town that need to be celebrated, that there are little victories like this that make Marshawn what it is, and hopefully, we can continue to grow on these little victories. So, a shout-out to Jim and his staff and what they're doing and what they will continue to do. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Thompson. Very good. Anyone else?
Your Honor.
Ms. Martin.
Every year, for the last eight years, I have surveyed our hiring practices, for summer employment especially, but also our state of affairs and our budget for those positions. I talk to people. I talk to department heads. I talk to prospective workers who'd like summer jobs and so on. I'm wondering out loud if we are keeping up with the hourly rates in order to attract people. We've done some incentive types of things with the Police Department in the past. We have done so with other types of things, and I'm wondering at this time, I should say this, I do know that the lifeguard situation is moving along well. I'm just wondering out loud if we have some unfilled positions that may be due to hourly wage or salary that we are not connecting with. So, I throw that out. Marshall Town, the city of Marshall Town, wants to be attractive and competitive, not over the top, but competitive with other businesses, other communities, to provide these services. So, I'm encouraging, at this date in May, that by June, that we have some really good employees. If there are positions in the budget that are not filled, I would ask why, and I think we need to fill those. We all know that the city staff has been very busy, and it's been ongoing, and we need the personnel, we need qualified people to fill those positions. So, I make a plea, and I want to recognize the efforts that our department heads and our city administrator have made. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Anyone else? Okay. Well, let me just inject a couple of things, too. Most of the time spent after the tornado, derecho, virus recovery has not been all that fun. Every once in a while, the Mayor gets a fun week, and what happened this last week was on Thursday, a meeting with all of the Iowa leadership folks. 60 or so people came up here. We had a meeting in the fourth floor of Raycom, which has a beautiful view, and several of us got to, including Jessica Kinzer, got to address the group about what we've been able to accomplish, and it was really fun and heartening to be able to talk about the things we've done, and it was very well received. And I had to hurry from that meeting over to the groundbreaking ceremony for the huge expansion of Marshall Town Company, formerly known as Marshawn Trial, that is changing the landscape over in that neighborhood. It's going to be a wonderful facility. They're going to employ more people, make more things. It was a really good news day, and so that was part of last week. So, things are picking up around here, and I just needed to add that. With that said, let's entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Your Honor, if I may.
You may.
I would like to pull item number five from the consent agenda, please.
Okay. We'll probably ask you why later.
Yep.
Anybody else want to pull anything else? Okay. With that one pulled, does anybody move into approve it?
So, I would move, Your Honor. Accepted.
Second, Your Honor.
Ms. Martin on the second. Thanks. We'll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. That's carried. Would you read items, all of the items except number five?
Approved minutes for the April 26-21 meeting and the bill list in the amount of $1,428,333.91. Received a building permit report for April 2021. Approval of renewal applications for state-of-Iowa retail cigarette, tobacco, nicotine, and vapor licenses through June 30th of 2022 for BW Gas and Convenience Retail LLC, DBA Gasway at 1701 Iowa Ave. East. Casey's number 3228 at 916 East Main. Casey's number 3508 at 108 Iowa Ave. West. Casey's number 1303 at 111 North Road Ave. Casey's 1441 at 1402 South 12th Ave. Casey's number 1564 at 1009 West Lincoln Way. Family Dollar number 22886 at 327 South 3rd Avenue. Marshall Beer, Wine, and Spirits at 11 North Road Avenue. Marshall Town Tobacco and Vape Outlet at 19 West Main Street. And Chag at 2501 South Center Street, Suite B. Approved tree trimmer license for Wright Outdoor Solutions, Inc., Jose's Tree Service, Grill, Lawn, and Snow Removal Services LLC. Resolution authorizing the city of Marshall Town to request certain delinquent properties to be designated for the 2021 public nuisance tax sale. Resolution approving contract change order number two for the Forest Street and Meadow Lane Storm Sewer Enhancements Project, number SMW17001, an increase of $3,800. Resolution approving an agreement between the city of Marshall Town, Iowa, and the Iowa Department of Transportation for the Traffic Safety Improvement Program funding.
Very good. Thank you, and let's address number five, then. Is there a motion to approve the resolution at number five?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And then I probably should have asked that it be read, too.
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the purchase of two 2021 Ford Interceptor police package vehicles from Jensen Ford for the price of $68,310 for use in the Police Department as emergency response vehicles and declaring certain property surplus property and authorizing sale and disposal thereof to Jensen Ford, a 2012 Chevrolet Tahoe for $8,000, and a 2015 Chevy Tahoe for $17,500.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Thompson, would you like to address why we pulled it?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. In keeping with the theme of celebrating the little victories in town, I just want to say, this is a huge victory, and I want to thank the Police Department staff for whatever they had to do to write the requirements so local businesses were able to bid on this competitively, and I want to thank Jensen Ford for having the winning bid. I wish that everything we purchased could be purchased here in Marshall Town or Marshall County. We need to do more things like this. I have started investigating the legalities of ways that we can wait the bids of local companies versus outside things, and I just can't say enough, this, again, we need to support, the city needs to set an example for all businesses in Marshall Town, Marshall County, that we need to purchase locally, and I think this is a huge win for us in the Police Department. So, thanks to all those that were involved with that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anticipating, there really isn't going to be any discussion on this one. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Before we go on to resolutions, yeah, the Chamber of Commerce has had a policy in place to encouraging people to, at least up to 5%, within 5% to purchase locally, whether it's profit corporations or nonprofit corporations around town, and so we always have to keep that in mind. Thank you, Mr. Thompson, for that. Let's go on to resolutions. Would you read the first one, Madam Clerk?
Resolution setting a public hearing for the FY21 budget amendment.
Let's see. We call for a motion to approve the resolution first.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Good evening. Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Well, we are now within eight weeks of the closeout of the fiscal year, so it's time to do our budget amendment. During our FY22 budget process, we brought you some reestimated numbers for this current fiscal year, but we need to make this official. So, if we are spending more than we had originally budgeted, we need to do a budget amendment. So, let's see. Make that a little bigger. Okay. So, of course, you know, when you're doing a budget, you also look at the revenues as well as the expenses, but we will go through this. So, this does not have any impact on the property tax levies, so we're keeping that the same. Coming down here, I'm just going to hit some of the major items. Delinquent property tax revenue. So, you may remember last spring, the governor came out and said that property taxes could be paid later than usual without a penalty, and so this $114,000 is actually from the fiscal year 2020 that we would have normally gotten in April. So, now that we're receiving it, we're increasing the budget by that amount. TIF revenue was just 20 bucks more. Nobody don't. Other city taxes was an increase of $432,000. That is primarily made up of local option sales tax, which increased by $525,000. We really had a lot more online sales than we expected, and so that increased our local option sales tax, but our motel tax did decrease by $95,000. So, the next line is licenses, increasing by $423,000. Most of that is from building permits. We're budgeting an increase of $440,000, and our liquor licenses are decreasing by $25,000. For use of money and property, this would be interest, and let's see. We had some new bonds that were issued. Intergovernmental actually decreased by $2 million. Intergovernmental actually decreased by $2 million. We had originally budgeted $1.6 million for the RISE grant for the Edgewood Expansion, so we are moving that from FY21 into FY22. There's also some changes for the airport, the timing of that project. We did receive some CARES Act funds and new grants from Department of Justice and Economic Development. And our lead grant did decrease due to the pandemic. There just wasn't as much activity as they could do. So with all that combination of $2 million reduction. The next one, charges for services also decreased, again, due to the pandemic. Our transit revenues went down, parks and rec fees went down, library fees went down, parking fees declined. And then, of course, after the derecho, the compost was closed. So all those together show a decrease of $243,000. Miscellaneous was an increase of $591,000. A lot of activity from the derecho, so the insurance company was reimbursing us, so that falls into that line. And we had about $154,000 increase from Coliseum donations. Other finance, or, yeah, other financing sources of $9.4 million. As you recall, we issued some new bonds, and then we also refinanced some existing bonds, so those all run through there. Transfers in, these aren't additional revenues, but they're just moving revenues from one fund to the other. Any questions on the revenues before I go on to the expenses?
Your Honor. Dana, I just want to reemphasize what you said about the licenses and permits. I think people need to understand, the building that's going on now, the good outcome of the tornado and the derecho, that's a huge increase in permit fees. I think people need to understand, Marsh Town's on the mend.
Right.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, good point. Thank you.
So going on to expenditures. Again, a lot of these different categories were affected by the derecho, so of course we have additional expenses due to that. We'll start out with public safety, which includes the Police and Fire Department and Building Department. Increase of $1.2 million. The council approved a new contract with YSS, and they approved the purchase of radios for the police department. And then we had an increase of the fire truck purchase that was shown in the capital improvement plan. And then, of course, all the repairs of vehicles and the building from the derecho. Public Works, increase of $3.9 million. Again, most of this is from the derecho. There's a lot of damage around town, a lot of tree removal. Health and Social Services, actually, it was a small decrease, again, due to the lead grant activity was limited. Culture and Recreation, increase of $463,000. Again, derecho costs. A lot of the park shelters were damaged and trees in the parks. That was a big expense. Community and Economic Development went up $1 million. So we had some additional grant costs through the Catalyst, EDA, and the Shared Wall Program, so we are spending some money out of those. General Government, about $69,000. Debt Service, $3 million. Again, refinancing those bonds. Capital Projects, we went into detail that one. We showed you our five-year capital plan in January and February. And then the Business Enterprise Funds, increase of $4.8 million. Again, we refinanced some bonds, $4.3 million out of there. So Marshalltown Water Works is also part of our budget. So when I contacted them, they did not have any adjustments. So none of the columns, this middle column here, affects, is affected by Marshalltown So you can kind of see our beginning fund balance for all activity, agency-wide, was $55 million coming into this fiscal year, and it's going to be $45 million going out. Again, we haven't been reimbursed for a lot of the FEMA activity, so that should come in in FY22 or FY23. And then we just have timing of different projects being funded. So do you have any questions on this form before I go on?
Don't see anybody stepping forward. Go ahead.
So if you like a lot of detail, this will provide you that. Again, it's the typical accounting activity that we have for our budget. So this is year-to-date activity through April. This is what we had reestimated for you during the January, February FY22 budget process. And then this next column is what we're projecting now through the end of fiscal year. And I made little notes over here to the side of any significant increases. So you can see the police department got some CARES Act grant funds. YSS contract was put in there, purchased some radios. The Fire Department also got some CARES Act grant funds. Building permits went up $440,000. I know I'm going through this kind of fast, but if you have any questions, just stop me. In Public Works Department, the Street Department, some of these costs, we moved down to snow. They were originally budgeted, but we're just changing functions. And then also, because they were doing derecho pickup, that also got moved to a different Again, like I said, snow removal got moved down to this function. Engineering did have some vacant positions during the year, so we did reduce that money. The airport had some CARES Act grant, $30,000. The library, because they reduced their hours, we did reduce their part-time help by $30,000. One thing overall I wanted to share was just when our insurance premiums for our general and property insurance did come in, we don't really know what that number is until, well, late February, early March. So it did not get into our reestimated budget, but it did go up. So for every department, we went through and increased that. Parks, again, reduction in charges for service. They did delay refilling a position with the retirement. So for retirements, when we budget it, we put it in function 6900. And then as the year goes, as the year passes, we move it to whatever department has a retirement. So those are adjustments for those. This is Recreation, so again, less hours due to the pandemic, so reduced that down. Less staff needed during the pandemic, low attendance, swimming pool. So for our TIF expenses, the only thing that can be directly paid out of TIF are the development agreements and the bond costs. Everything else, we have to pay, we pay out of the general fund, and then TIF reimburses us through a transfer. So that's why these expenses are here for the Chamber and Central Business District, the facade grants, the demolitions, the TIF agreements, they're all here for legal costs. For the general fund, you did approve a benchmark survey that we paid, so we budgeted $20,500 So again, the delinquent property taxes, remember how I said that they were delayed from last spring, a year ago? So we actually received them in this year. The motel fees are down, interest rates dropped. Again, the retirements, we just rebudgeted to the different functions. The funds that start with 300 are in the five-year capital plan, which you approved earlier this year, which we already had the hearing on that, so. We sold the old fire station, so we got some additional revenue for that. For the fire truck, we'll actually receive the revenue in fiscal year '22. We originally had that budgeted this fiscal year. And then we have higher price on the fire trucks that we purchased than we originally budgeted last year. Got some new bond monies this year. You will recall that we sold some lots at South Ridge Estates, so that increased some revenue. Local option sales tax, online shopping increased. Fund 130 is our insurance, so a lot of the revenue, increased revenues and expenses are all due to the derecho. So we have reimbursements for that. So yes, it's been quite a year between the derecho, the pandemic, everything else. Refinancing bonds, new bonds, a lot of activity. New grants, here's your Catalyst grant and EDA and your related expenses. So this is the, Fund 145 is the tornado fund, so we had a street project that we're paying out of there. So we adjusted for the revenue, hoping it comes in this fiscal year. We've requested 75% of that. It always takes longer than you expect, so I don't know that it would be in for sure, but if it's not coming in this year, it'll come in next year. And here's the street project for that tornado, funding $1.4 million. Have some roof repairs from the tornado. I know the tornado is several years ago, and you're wondering why we still have expenses, but we do. Lot of reimbursement from FEMA. Again, Fund 149 is the FEMA derecho project. So the costs are being submitted to FEMA. So FEMA would pay 75% from the federal money and 10% for state match. So the city is on the hook for the other 15%. Here's a new grant from the police department. An additional cost for that grant. This is the lead grant. Costs slowed down because of the pandemic. Fund 200 is our debt service. We did issue bonds. And then on the expense side, it also includes the refunding of prior-year bonds. So the funds starting in 300s series are in the five-year capital plan. We originally budgeted $1.1 million for the library addition. That project is not going to happen this year and is on hold for now. Bring back to you the next budget cycle for discussion. Again, we did refund a lot of bonds this year to get that lower interest rates and save our dropping. Took advantage of that. So does anybody have any questions on this document? I know it's 108 pages, so it's a lot to go through. Again, you can still ask questions next time, in two weeks when we have the public hearing, Any questions on that document?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I think all you're summarizing is we don't want to have any more
FEMA projects.
Nature of, natural disasters is what you're summarizing.
Mm-hmm. That'd be nice.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I do have a couple more documents. So this is the projected cash balances. So I updated the FY21 column. So originally, for the general fund, 001, when we were budgeting it a year ago, we showed an increase of $105,000, and now we're at $613,000. But a lot of that's going to go out, some of it's going to go back out in next fiscal So I just want to give you the sheet so you can see an update. So the FY, in the yellow is what we are projecting to end with in fiscal year '21. And then, of course, you already saw the FY22 budget cycle, and so that updates the ending FY22 numbers. The only one you may be a little questionable is this one right here, because it's in a negative $108,000. But again, that's that fire truck, so once we get our new truck in, and then we can sell the old one, but that's not going to happen until fiscal year '22. Any questions on the sheet? Again, we pick up Marshalltown Water Works, so it's at the bottom here, their activity. And then the transfers. So we bring this to you every quarter, but since we're updating the FY21 budget, we just thought we'd bring it to you now. You'll still need to do a resolution once we bring you the June financials, but we just wanted to show you what the transfers would be coming in and out. So again, this was the original amount, and this is the amended amount. The road use tax decreased about $200,000. Again, that was because of the derecho. The Street Department was working with that rather than just regular road activity. Increase $700,000 due to the tornado street project. We have $432,000 increase because of the derecho. Down here under Fund 121, the local option sales tax, we increased that up to $120,000, which is these three numbers together. which is these three numbers together for the, for the city match. And we talked about that during our budget cycle as well, when we were talking about local option sales tax. And then again with TIF, we pay certain expenses out of the general fund and then transfer the money from TIF fund. So any questions on those? If not, that's all the handouts that I have. So I need you to set the public hearing date.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Before we do that, I think I have a question for Jessica.
Okay.
On the FEMA and state reimbursements, that 85%, what's our, what's the end date on that after the derecho?
Um, well, for-
I mean, I don't want to, you know, we're looking at some pretty substantial numbers there that are still going to impact us. In the state and all their budget revision stuff, they haven't pulled that 10% away on us, have they?
No, they're required to provide that 10%. So we-
I'm assuming the clock isn't open forever, though.
No, so basically, category A and B, which is your debris removal and your emergency response, that's a six-month period after the, after the day of disaster. And so we've, we've pretty much, we've exhausted that. Our, where we have some flexibility is there, we have contracts out for the tree removal, and there still needs to be some chipping and hauling of tree debris as well. But FEMA's not obligated anything to us yet under the derecho disaster. And so there, there is nothing that they have, have obligated, which means that it's then sort of approved on their end, and we can start drawing down. So we are, we are moving very slowly on this one. We've learned that all federal employees that are assigned to us are working remotely from their homes, and that, that provides some interesting back and forth at times, so.
You don't anticipate a risk to us down the road, though?
I, I don't anticipate a risk, but I mean, it's not like we can go out and identify something new right now, so.
I understand.
Yeah, so it's really, we had a time period to identify things. I think that we were pretty good in, in getting some things in there that were proactive thinking, like the street repair, looking at each ward, to have some level of street repair done on the streets that were damaged the most.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Thank you.
So there was like $4 million that we haven't even been obligated yet. Thank you.
Is it my understanding that public hearing will be on May 24, then?
Yes.
Very good. Let's go on to the-
Need to approve that resolution. Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
One of the city council meetings.
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. That carried, let's go on to the next resolution, if you'd read that one.
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the award or contract for the Lynn Creek Trail crack sealing project in the city of Marshawn, Iowa, in the amount of $86,747.10.
Move for approval. Second.
Discussion on this one.
I'm here, and thank you, Diana, for talking so long. This is Jeff Hubbard, Park and Rec Director. I just was at my senior kid soccer night, and of course, it happens right when I'm supposed to be talking, so it went, went fine smooth. I got my picture taken, it's all good. We put out bids for crack sealing, and only one bidder bid on it, which is, actually, the vendor who we wanted, they did it previously about seven years ago, they're also one that the county is working with to do their section, and it's already actually started on theirs last week. So I called two or three other companies that were in Iowa, and most of the answers I got were, our schedule's already done for the season, or booked for the season, or we don't have the materials that we could use to do the job. So I'd like to move forward and get Denko to do the crack sealing. They're actually going to bid us for half of it in June, and then the other half in July. We have CIP funds to pay for that over this year and next year's CIP budget, and they're supposed to have the work done by Memorial Day weekend, so we'll have a pretty smooth ride if we can get a bit of them.
Good phrasyology. Any questions or comments for Jeff? Okay, I suppose we should open this one to public comment.
The lines are unmuted.
All unmuted, let's go 10. Let's do a roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Onto the next item, if you'd read that one, we'll open the public hearing.
Public hearing and resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and cost for the Anson Shelter, Anson Park Shelter improvements project in the city of Marshawn, Iowa, being project number PRK 20001.
Okay, it's 6:26 by my watch, and I'll declare the public hearing is open. Did you receive any written comments at the clerk's office?
No, Your Honor.
Open the mics for public comments for 10 seconds, please.
The mics are open.
Time for staff review. Come in, Houston.
So for the Anson Shelter, uh-
Go ahead, Jeff.
Am I muted?
You're good, we can hear you.
Okay. We, we put out the bids for Anson Shelter, you know, last year, and the bids came in higher, so than expected, so we put that kind of on hold in December, January. We worked with TSB Architects again to kind of refill the project, cut back on the heating and cooling, kind of the element that pushed us over the edge, and a little of the interior work. City, our park crews are going to do some of the painting and some of the work on the inside to kind of cut the budget down, hopefully. Still a little concerned with the cost of building as it's gone up from last year to this year, but we think we made the right deductions in the project, but it still will be usable year-round, which is what we want, and have a good look on the outside, so. That's all I got.
Thank you, then let's go to council comments. Hearing done, I will declare the meeting, the hearing is closed at 6:28 PM. And let's go on to the next public hearing, number four.
Your Honor, we need to vote on that item.
Resolution, sure, sorry. Let's call for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. Now onto number four.
Public hearing and resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and cost for the Lynn Creek Trail project in the city of Marshawn, Iowa, being project number PRK 20002.
Okay, we'll declare that public hearing is open now at 6:29 PM. Did you receive any written comments at the clerk's office?
No, Your Honor.
Open the mics for public comments for 10.
The mics are open.
Time for staff review.
Jeff Hubbard, Park and Rec Director, not Justin, not Justin Nichols. So we're, we're going to send you in here to, uh, put out the trail bids, so we're actually going to pave with the street, 1.7 miles of trail, and obviously, the, the one you just approved before was for crack sealing and everything else, but we'd like to kind of get the Lynn Creek Trail improved with concrete throughout the next couple of years, so this is kind of first phase one of it, replacing 1.7 miles. It'll go from Mega 10 Park to the Cover Bridge, and from Main Street to Mary. And we hope to have this done again this year, so we'll have a smooth way from Grimes Farm all the way to review.
Thank you. Council comments.
Your Honor?
Ms. Thompson.
I'm just curious if our Park and Rec Director, Justin Nichol, would like to have any comments on this one? Thank you, Your Honor.
That's all right, I'm feeling better about screwing up not having to vote on the last one.
At least, at least you know your title, right?
Yeah, well. Okay, any other council comments?
Soccer game and-
Don't forget sunscreen out there. Other council comments, oh. All right, then I'll declare the public hearing is closed at 6:31 PM, and this time I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Very good, that carried on to item H, ordinances, would you read the first one, please?
Ordinance 15018, providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property designated as Section A of the Marshalltown Urban Renewal Area Number Six, pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa, second reading.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good, let's go to discussion.
This is the second reading of the ordinance that actually establishes the TIF district for the Glenwood Marshall Town LLC Development Agreement, which you approved at the last meeting.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions? I suppose we should open the mic for 10.
The lines are unmuted.
Roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Onto the next ordinance.
Ordinance 15019, establishing a vacant property code, second reading.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good, discussion?
This is the second reading of the ordinance to establish the vacant property code.
Thank you. Any council comments or questions? Let's unmute for five seconds this time.
We are unmuted.
See if people are on their toes if they want to talk, roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Carried as well, on to the third, the fourth ordinances, please.
Ordinance 15020, to amend code ordinances, city of Marshalltown, Iowa, Sections 52.029 concerning wastewater rates.
Solicited a motion.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you, is there a second?
So moved.
Let's go, Martin on the second on that one, and discussion.
This is implementing a 1% sewer rate increase for three years, starting January 1st, 2022.
Discussion by the council. Let's unmute for five.
The lines are unmuted.
Call the roll, please.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Carried as well, and on to the fourth and last ordinance.
Ordinance 15021, approving the rezoning of parcel 831801305005 to R5 High Density Residential District, first reading.
Any motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
And discussion.
Michelle Spahn, I'm her housing community development director. This is the first reading of an ordinance to rezone the parcel that I have kind of shown here in the memo, from R2A, which is a low-density residential district, to an R5, which is a high-density residential district. The property is being proposed for multifamily housing development, and in order to obtain the density levels that they're looking to get in this area, the R5 classification will allow for that. A large portion of this parcel is really not developable, as it is in floodplain area, as shown on this graphic. We also have proposed that in our transportation plan, as part of the comprehensive plan, that South 7th Avenue will continue through as a minor collector through this area to serve our transportation needs. And so in order to, again, kind of match with some of the density that is being requested, the R5 classification is what's being requested by the developer in this situation. To the north of this area, there are existing apartment complexes, multifamily buildings as well, so it does fit similarly in nature to those complexes that are currently existing in the, in the area. And so the Plan Zoning Commission did have a review of the proposal and a public hearing. On Thursday, May 6, they had their hearing, and did recommend approval of the rezoning request to you as counsel. The applicant is requesting that the third reading of this ordinance be waived, and so we are proposing that the public hearing be scheduled for the next meeting, which would be May 24. I believe we do have representation on the phone as well as here in the chambers.
Any questions or comments for Michelle?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Michelle, our, I understand the reason to waive the third reading. Has everybody in the area been contacted to know that we are going to have the public, we're probably going to have the public hearing next meeting?
So we, we do not send out a notification to surrounding property owners. We do put the notice in the, in the paper, and we post a sign at the property, and in this case, we posted the sign at the, on Olive and 7th Avenue, recognizing that people wouldn't be driving to the end of the street, so.
More than enough.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Other questions or comments? Should we open, unmute again?
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you. Somebody out there is violating our new noise ordinance. I don't know if anybody can hear the pounding bass by a vehicle that just went by. Yeah. Chief, you can stick around. Do we have that device yet that measures the, the level?
Yes.
That's more than 10 seconds, so let's close the mics and take a vote.
Martin?
Well, excuse, excuse me, are we, we're just voting to set the public hearing for May 24?
And the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading in, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks for clarifying, sure.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Very good, that carried as well, on to the discussion items, the first of which is a citizen's request for county-held tax certificates.
Yes, I received another request for two additional county-held tax certificates. They also have significant balances that are special assessments from the city, as well as past property taxes due. 918 and 920 North 5th Avenue, they're very similar lots. We do have 30, more than $3,500 due on 918 North 5th Avenue, and almost $6,000 due on 900, or 920 North 5th Avenue. And so ultimately, this would be like 503 Woodbury that we considered the last meeting, which would, we'd, if you would like to move forward with this, it would be an acknowledgement of waiving all of these past due liens and special assessments, as well as any taxes that are due to us currently. We would put a resolution on the next agenda to request these tax certificates from the county treasurer. The county treasurer then takes it to the board of supervisors to then move it forward and get their approval to issue us the tax certificate. Then legal counsel takes it and tries to obtain a tax deed. So that is, that is what is before you tonight. So that is, that is what is before you tonight.
Okay. Open for discussion.
I think it's a good idea.
Any rejoinder to that, or does everybody nod ahead? Yes.
Your Honor, I drove by these properties over the weekend, and there's like five of them in a row. You know, there's three others besides these two that, the other ones, the taxes obviously are being paid on, but I spoke with Jessica earlier. Anything we can do to pave the path for people to take ownership of these properties and do something with them, I'm all for that. I mean, this is like the dilapidated buildings, the other vacant lots, and I'm just wondering if, you know, sending a message to the public, if there's other lots, let us know. Because I think we're all in favor of getting these lots in the hands of owners that'll actually do something with them. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Yep. Other reactions or comments? I think you have your direction, unless you like it by a formal motion.
I'm okay with that. You all have to approve it at the next meeting anyway, so I can take that as my direction.
Okay. Very good. The next one is a request for proposal for internal community marketing.
Yes. So as we talked about, MIC TV no longer being available, there were kind of three things that I broke things down into that they do. One of the things is really what I'm calling community marketing to Marshalltown residents. They provided that through the production of videos and interviews with local things happening, coverage of events, different things like that. And so I've drafted up a request for a proposal that basically, if you want to, it would be, you know, requesting proposals from nonprofit and for-profit entities to see how they would propose fulfilling that internal community marketing. And the payment source would be the $40,000 in local option sales tax that had been allocated to MIC TV for this next year's budget. So this is certainly not something that we have to do, but I thought this would be probably the easiest way to see what's out there in terms of community marketing strategies and proposals, if you would so like to proceed.
Reactions, comments, and questions?
I think based off some of the conversation earlier from other council members and otherwise, talking about celebrated victories in Marshalltown and continuing to make sure we highlight some of that stuff, I think this is the appropriate avenue at this point in time to make sure we continue to do that. So I'm in favor of this.
Thanks, Mr. Isom. Others?
I agree.
Okay.
Jessica, can we limit this to... Do we have the legal standing to limit this to Marshalltown-based companies?
Not per our purchasing policy, yeah.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I think the timing is correct to proceed and see what's out there. You never know until you invite and describe a bit what we're looking for, at least in generalities, so I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
And, Your Honor, one more question for Jessica, if I may?
You may.
Jessica, how would you weight these? I mean, if we do this, these are going to come in, one's going to be all videos, one's going to be all table toppers, one's going to be all, you know, social media. I mean, how are we all going to be on this committee to determine which one we go with, if we go with one, and do we have the right to refuse all of them?
Well, what I would recommend is that you not all be on the committee, because that's a public meeting, but I would recommend that a few of you, if you'd like to volunteer to be part of the evaluation, that there'd be some staff members and some council members who would come back to the council with the recommendation. I think at the June 14th council meeting was what I had it listed as. And so that would be kind of the intention and how I would see that, and so it'd give, if you want to issue this, we would issue it tomorrow. My planned posting would be doing something in the TR, and then our notice to bidders on our website, not looking to put it on the Iowa League of Cities website or anything, so I think we would probably draw that local crowd, probably, Councilmember Thompson. But, but yeah, if, I would like it to be just kind of a small group to evaluate and come back with some recommendations, so.
So it's wide open, whatever they can come up with?
Whatever they can come up with. You know, one of the things I just thought that I probably didn't put in here is that we can put a preference that we prefer a variety of methods, that the winning proposal likely has a variety of methods for engagement in it, or something to that effect. So that it's clear that you don't want just videos, or you don't want just tabletop things to go everywhere. You want a variety.
And then I'm assuming we give them free use of the, more than ever, we give them the artwork and everything?
Yeah, so that's actually, it's not ours. It's Vision Marshalltown in the chambers, and they basically have put it out there. It is free for public use. There's actually a page on the chambers' website that has that information, so I would probably, looking at this, add that link to this document so that it's clear where people need to go to access that.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Anyone else? Okay, I know Jessica's been coordinating with the Vision Marshalltown people that are kind of doing the same sort of promotion for things like this, and there'll be a continuing dialogue with them. We really do need to get the word out here that we've got so many good things going. We really have to get that word out.
So my plan will be to issue this tomorrow, and as I mentioned, if there's two to three of you that are interested in evaluating proposals, please let me know, and we'll move something. Well, your time commitment would be the week of June 7th.
Thank you. Any other comment for the good of the cause? Otherwise, I think you have your direction on this one, too. Okay, let's talk about infrastructure partnership with HCI.
Yes, so we do have Heather, who, here in Council Chambers, and I think Tom Wertzberger is on the line as well, to talk about this project, any specific project or questions about the project. But as Michelle kind of laid the groundwork, South 7th Avenue is an important piece in our plan, our comprehensive plan for transportation. And so as we talked about it through a development meeting about this property and what this would look like, we do want South 7th Avenue as a through street to ultimately, in that bigger picture, make that connection with South Ridge. So you'll remember, we just built South 7th Avenue to the south of South Ridge, so this would be eventually making that connection on the north side. So South 7th Avenue would be a collector's street throughout the east side of the community. And so ultimately, there's already some infrastructure that is in place there, but there, it is not all completely there. South 7th Avenue in whole would need to be constructed. CGA for the developer did come up with a probable opinion of cost of 1.46 million, and so I put in my memo that we would look at this being similar to what we have done with cading properties, as well as with Rosemont, in terms of street, sewer. Storm sewer would be the city, the design of the plans and specifications, as well as the water infrastructure, and then construction oversight would be the responsibility of the developer. And so that's ultimately the, the cost thing you have here does exclude the water lines and the cost of the engineering. So the big question is, how do you fund $1.46 million, and there is not an easy answer to that or straightforward answer like we had with the other two projects and those development agreements. And so I listed four sources here, and I kind of just wanted to touch on those just a little bit more. We will be talking about bonding soon, and general obligation bonding, and I can tell you, we're going to have a lot of competing priorities that'll be coming up here, but that is certainly one of those things that's out there, where it's an optional funding source. The American Rescue Plan, just today, the Department of Treasury dropped 100, I think it was 51 pages of text about what the American Rescue Plan dollars could be used for. In my very, very quick reading, it does not look like we can do it for any road construction that we were planning to do, other than if we were planning to use cash for it. So like, say, we were planning to use certain amounts of road use tax, you know, for certain projects, there might be some things that we could potentially fill in there, but it's not going to cover 1.46 million. However, the American Rescue Plan can be used for stormwater infrastructure and sanitary sewer infrastructure, so there is potentially part of that funding that could be used there. Road use tax, that's another source. We have $236,000 that we did receive from the Iowa DOT that was just a special payment. We thank them for that payment, and that is really something that was not anticipated and was not budgeted for in this last capital improvement plan. And I believe that we've seen our road use tax payments continue to come in sort of as expected. There was a little bit of slowdown with COVID, but otherwise, we feel like we're caught up. And then finally, the council-designated local option sales tax, and so that's really, you know, that big source that you have the ability to do a lot with. Unfortunately, I couldn't really get into more specifics on these, especially with the American Rescue Plan, but there's certainly more analysis that we can do, and I think we'll be talking about the American Rescue Plan more in-depth at the next meeting to get some direction on your spending priorities there, within the very specific guidelines that it provides. But I did want to get this in front of you tonight so that the developer has direction, and we as staff have direction, as to whether or not this is an infrastructure partnership you would like to participate in.
No discussion? I guess I'll kick it off. I mean, it fits within the priorities, the housing infrastructure, it's segue into one piece of what could be a development opportunity in that area. I have a hard time arguing against a partnership, and obviously, the hurdle being the discussion around the financing piece of it. And I guess the one question I had, as we talked to Santarion Stormwater, do we have any idea of what percentage of that 1.46 would encompass? A portion that could be covered by that, from a funding perspective, and what's remaining for the rest of the construction?
I don't know if we can put Heather on the spot there that quickly.
Heather Thomas with CGA, 16 East Main Street. Very, very quick look at this. I'm looking at, you know, $100,000 of that would be storm and sanitary improvements.
Okay, so pretty small. Essentially, we're stuck with 1.3 still outstanding of what we would have to do from a funding perspective. I don't know how we make it work, and obviously, to the bonding priority discussion will have to be a fun conversation itself, but I have a hard time not thinking that this is something we want to put on the priority list. Just both on immediate need and future potential from a housing perspective.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, sir. You may.
I agree with Councilman Isom that we need to think about future developable property, but I don't think this is the answer. We need to look at return on investment, and if we put a street in, a brand-new street in, that we can only develop on the east, am I looking at this right, the east side of it? Michelle, if you can correct me, that's all floodplain on the west side, right?
Yes, correct. The west side is floodplain, I think, in thinking about this, and we don't have right before you, I don't know, maybe if you want to pull up Beacon or something, but to the, further to the east, there is a significant amount of area that is currently agricultural use that could be developed for other housing. So although there's not going to be a whole lot on the west because of that floodplain, we know that it does provide for kind of that allowance for things to continue on the east side of this area, just kind of in reference, basically, all of this area here. And so I think it is a very important corridor there, and the return on investment would be that long-term that we're making for that connection. There's limits in accessibility and egress, where we've talked about before, for access for fire safety and emergency vehicles and all those kind of things with the number of units. And so that's one of the other pieces, is that we know that in order to have some of that development continue, there will need to be secondary access points that come into this area.
Well, that's where, I'm glad you said that, because that's where I'm leading with this, is perhaps, you know, a street is necessary through there, but maybe it needs to be farther east. I'm looking at a beacon map of Olive, and there's other opportunities for openings to come through off of Olive.
There...
You know, that would come down and maybe come down to this, the south, and then curve over and pick up 7th on South Ridge, and then stubs could be put off that, you know, to the backside of this development we're talking about today. I just, I don't, I just can't see how this is the best money we can spend without developing both sides of the street, when we have more room in that whole property to the east to bring maybe 10th or 9th, or 10th or 11th through there, and then wind it down to 7th. It could be like Madison, Lincoln Way. It can change names as it winds down through. I mean, Rainbow Drive has, you know, different addresses, because it has a north-south and an east-west. I don't know why we couldn't do that.
Yeah, so we did talk about, and we have looked at, other areas in where potentially the roadway could come through, and so I just want to point some of these out, because these are definitely part of our discussion. You know, and why we still believe that South 7th Avenue makes the most sense to extend. Coming through this area, which kind of seems like that could be a logical point, there is a lot of different things already happening. There's stormwater retention that's occurring as part of what I call the charomp development that is occurring there. And there is just the topography and the terrain in there, it doesn't really allow for a street to come through. You do have a single-family residential here as well. This is not public street that runs through that development, and so we would not intend on connecting through that, because it would not meet our minimum infrastructure requirements. And then by the time you get kind of closer to Governor Road on this side to bring Olive through, you know, you're really starting to just hit close to that Governor Road. Not to say that you wouldn't want to bring that on to Olive at some point, there might be a need for an extension, but honestly, I feel like this corner would make a very nice multifamily development corner, as one similar in nature to what we're seeing here or on these pieces, where you would have a large space that could have its driveway accesses onto Olive or Governor Road, but not necessarily needed through street. We do have infrastructure that comes along, probably right around the section line, I think, just in this time, for sewer and stormwater. And so we are fairly certain that the road will need to continue out to Governor Road in that location, and Heather has already shown on that, back on her drawing the, I'll let you back control again. Where those two points where that connection could be made to carry out that street. So we know that there will be points, yeah, there you go. She has it not shown in pink, but just kind of grayed out right here. So that would be that extension.
So basically, you just reinforced my argument that the street comes down from the 9th or 10th or 11th area and goes down and then connects to that, and maybe goes, instead of going clear down to your existing draft for 7th, it goes, instead of cutting off that triangle, it goes straight to the south from there. Just follows the street, goes over the sewer line, and then when it gets to that first, your first black line there?
Heather Thomas with CGA. I've absolutely looked at the idea, talking about double-sighting a street. In this particular property, just with the development going in, it makes sense for this development to all be on one side of the street. However, as this street would continue further south, I think there would be potential to swing that out to the east a little bit further and provide for development on both sides from this point across the Hunt property further to South Ridge. Follow that, or I can, if you want to go back to the Beacon page?
If I can.
I can show you.
Have the Hunts been contacted that we're, that we platted this already?
This has not been platted.
Oh.
Yep, this is a separate owner. So in this area here, the property we're talking about is this property here. If 7th Ave were to extend further, there would be potential to swing it out further to allow possibly for a little bit of development on the west side as well, before bringing it back in into this area. So while this first piece, you know, 1,000 or so feet at the north end, would not have loading on both sides, I think... loading on both sides, I think there'd be potential for the extension further south if the city chooses to have a both sides.
And that is the whole property that was being purchased right now, that whole triangle there?
Triangle piece.
That's a lot of expense for them for 103 units. I guess I just don't want to see the cart before the horse. I don't know why we just can't cul-de-sac, as much as I hate cul-de-sacs, cul-de-sac Seventh Avenue at their front door and then let development take care of itself later and plat the streets behind them.
Well, and we certainly, we certainly talked about that option, and, you know, could you dead-end that road essentially with a cul-de-sac? And I think that, given that our comprehensive plan and transportation plan do show that through street and the experiences that we have had with the problems that come later on when you end something without the potential for continuation, is that it makes it very challenging to do down the road once things have developed. And so I would strongly recommend that this does continue as a through street, that it really needs to continue as a through street, so that we are thinking about our planning and development as a whole in this process, knowing that we have approximately 90 acres of land to service through this connection piece.
But we just spent half a million dollars to build a dead-end cul-de-sac for a developer next to Wayward Social.
That's not an area where there is the potential for future expansion.
Sure there is. We own all that land all the way over to 12th Street. We can go all the way through that golf course. That's ours. When that in 20 years, when the lease expires, you know?
I think, given that this is an obvious opportunity for redevelopment on our community that, where that is more of an already-used property, I'd see a difference, but we can agree to disagree.
I'll give it up. I just don't see this, putting this on us, on the taxpayers, you know, in that location, and I just don't see it putting it on the developer for 103 units. So, thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Would any other consulars like to address this?
I'm in support of the project. I would like to see funding options down more nitty-gritty, how we can do it, what the effects of the different funds would be, what we could possibly be sacrificing if we do do it. I'd like to see the project built, but I'd like to also see the funding that we're talking about.
Very good. Thanks for that input. Anyone else? It has been kind of fun to drive by State Street here to see the new multi-housing development going up four stories.
If you would like, I mean, tonight was just to know whether or not there was interest, and it does generally sound like there's some interest, but you have to know the whole picture, which would be expected. We can bring this back as a discussion item on the 24th after we've had a little bit more time to break things down. Maybe there's something in the American Rescue Plan that I missed in my quick reading of it, and so we can definitely come back with some different options.
Great. Very good. Let's go on to public comment, then. At this time, members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda. Approach the mic, state your name and address. Limit the comments to three minutes unless I authorize longer. Direct the comments to the mayor or council as a whole, and we, as the consulars and mayor, are not engaged in discussion or debate about the items in order to not run afoul of the open meetings laws. The microphones are unmuted and have been. Let's leave them open for 10 seconds this time. Okay. Nobody's approached the mic, and we haven't heard anybody on the phone or computer, so let's go ahead and I'll entertain a motion for going into the closed session pursuant to Section 21.5 of the Iowa Code relating to the sale or purchase of real estate where there could be a reduction or increase in price if this were made public. We do have an attorney-client relationship with Mr. Schell and Lynch Dallas, and there may be consultation by motion following the closed session if directed so by the city's attorney. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Let's call the roll on that one.
Martin?